Six oh five.
What?
Over there.
Oh, we have a clock. But things are changing. Okay, so let's call the meeting to order and do the pledge of allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Could we please have a roll call?
No, let's do the closed session.
We're down here.
Councilmember Palito.
Bob.
I see.
Here.
Great. Councilmember Hawkins.
Here.
Councilmember Lewis.
Here.
Vice Mayor Whitmer.
Yep.
And Mayor DeGolia.
Yes, I'm here. I mean, something.
I mean, the closed session.
Closed session. The report out of closed session. Now, I can see the closed session is over. We're down into the regular agenda.
Oh.
The report of closed session comes after public comments. The first item on the agenda is a proclamation, which I would like to make. This is a proclamation regarding the month of May being Mental Health Awareness Month. This is a proclamation of the town of Atherton in recognition of May 2022 as Mental Health Awareness Month. And I don't think that I need to read the whole presentation. It is in all of our packets. And I know that we have joined a group of other Samatelle County cities recognizing this month as Mental Health Awareness Month. And I believe that there is a training program regarding mental health issues that one of my comments during the city manager's report was to specify when that would be. And I'll just recognize that we are doing that as the town of Atherton.
And I'd also like to let you know that we have Yoko Ning from the county's commission to receive the proclamation.
Oh, we have a representative? So if she would like me to read the proclamation, I'd be happy to read the proclamation. It is a document in all of our documents.
You have the floor, Yoko, if you'd like to say anything.
Oh, sure. All right. Just will be just a minute. So good evening, city mayor, council members, city manager, staff and residents of Atherton. My name's Yoko Ng and I use she/her pronouns. I am a member of the Samatelle County Behavioral Health Commission. This is my second, third year term as a commissioner. Thank you to the city of Atherton for proclaiming 2022 May Mental Health Month. Mental Health Month is important to me because the Mental Health Awareness Month provides a timely reminder that mental health is essential and that those living with mental health challenges are deserving of care, understanding, compassion, and pathways to hope, healing, recovery, and fulfillment. In my profession as a medical interpreter, I cross paths with the vulnerable population suffering from a variety of mental health challenges with language barrier. Knowing the gap of equity in the healthcare system, I want to raise awareness of mental health as a trained public educator, providing adult mental health first aid training program to the general public of our community and local businesses for staff training opportunities in Samatelle County. Lastly, I want to say that happy May Mental Health Month. Please join us in promoting this year's theme. Hashtag SMC, take action for MH, stands for mental health, where we encourage everyone to take noticeable steps towards supporting mental wellness. Find free events and resources at smcmentalhealthmonth.org. Thank you again for recognizing May Mental Health Month. Thank you.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you so much.
Anybody else have any comments? No. Okay, so I would like to open it to any public comments. Any public comments can be made by teleconference, by clicking the reaction button on the bottom of your screen and raising your hand, or by emailing our city clerk. I don't see any public comments due. No. Okay. Could we please have a report out of closed session?
Mayor, thank you, Mayor DeGolia. The council did meet closed session tonight to talk about the performance evaluation of the city manager as well as the city attorney. No members of the public made comment prior to adjourning into closed session. And the closed session resulted in the council, the mayor forming an ad hoc committee to talk about compensation, and the closed session will continue at the June meeting.
Okay, thank you. The next item on the agenda is the city manager's report.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. In terms of the council, you have the written report before you this evening. I did answer a couple of one-on-one questions in advance, but staffs here and happy to answer any questions the council may have. An answer to the mayor's question about the mental health first aid training, SAMCDA has announced that that training is going to be offered throughout the year and beyond. And schedules will soon be announced. They haven't been announced yet.
Okay, thank you. Does anyone on the council have any comments or questions about the city manager's report?
No.
I have five comments or questions. The first is, I just wanted to confirm on the mental health training. Did we schedule that, George?
No, it's going to be throughout the year. They haven't sent out schedules.
Okay, okay, great. I just wanted to note that in the city manager's report, he and in his regular Friday reports, he lists the current activity of fourteen subcommittees of the council. And with fourteen subcommittees, every subcommittee has two members of the council on it. We all just need to be quite careful not to speak about that subject matter to a third member of the council because that would be a Brown Act problem. And I raise it because fourteen subcommittees is a lot. And I have been concerned about that and the number of subjects that it presents us where we're limited in our conversation with other council members to the other member of our subcommittee. And if any council members have thoughts or opinions about that, please let me know. It's just something I've been concerned with, so I just wanted to raise it.
Well, I think, Mr. Mayor, that, yeah, some of the subcommittees are close to, if not having have completed their tasks. And so we need to close those ones out.
And many of them are, I mean, some number of the fourteen are definitely directly related to sound town center activities. So by the next council meeting, maybe George and I will specifically walk through those and assess that and have those closed out. Okay, my third comment is, in going over the officer-initiated activities, I just am happy that we've issued increased numbers of citations for speed violations, for moving violations that's reported here. You know, we got lots of comments from residents about concerns about the traffic, mostly traffic going too fast in Atherton. So I just wanted to express some appreciation for those citations. I I also noted that the the comments on the traffic complaints were, I thought, really important, that the results of four hundred and twenty minutes of enforcement time with one citation issued for speed in one area about Berry Lane, where a resident had complained that there was speeding traffic. And the police spent four hundred and twenty minutes evaluating that. That's really significant. And they issued a citation and two warnings. So there obviously was an issue there. And if there's any residents listening in, I want to encourage you that if you have experience on your street or on a street that you frequent often and that you think that people are going too fast on that street, you should let the Atherton Police Department know because they, in fact, follow up on those complaints. And we can see there's real results here. So I want to thank the police department for that. And I want to encourage any residents, if you see that kind of a problem, to alert the police department to it. And finally, I just wanted to note that in the city manager's report, there's every month a result of those people that respond to see, click, fix, that the city of Atherton has initiated this see, click, fix ability by going online to the see, click, fix website and noting a problem that any resident identifies in Atherton. Potholes, you know, limbs of trees too close to a lane or in a lane or whatever it might be. If there's a problem that you identify, you can alert our Public Works Department by clicking see, click, and fix, and you're going to get a result. So I want to thank Public Works for that. That's it. Okay, that brings us to the consent calendar. And the consent calendar involves items seven through fourteen. Does anyone on the council wish to pull any item from the consent calendar? See any requests? If anyone from the public wishes to pull any item from the consent calendar, please click your reactions button and raise your hand to let us know. And if anyone has any comment or question about any item in the consent calendar. I have, I have one comment, which is I noted in item, this is in item number eleven, which is the acceptance of the treasures report for the third quarter. On page seven of twenty-seven, which is the quarterly treasures report of cash and investments balanced by fund as of March thirty-first, 2022, and the column under which all of the numbers are listed says June balance. I assume that's a typo. But I'm sure Robert can correct it, but I thought I'd point it out.
Thank you.
Okay, not seeing any other comments on the consent calendar. Could I get a motion to approve?
Second.
Okay, I have a motion and a second. I think we need to do a roll call.
Councilmember Palito.
Aye.
Councilmember Hawkins.
Aye.
Councilmember Lewis.
Aye.
Vice Mayor Whitmer.
Aye.
Mayor DeGolia.
Aye.
Okay, that brings us to item number fifteen. Moving right along, we only have two regular agenda items, second of which will no doubt take a little longer than item fifteen. This is to approve the park and recreation outdoor facilities donation policy, which I think is laid out quite well in the staff report. George, is that your?
Yes, I can do a quick overview on that one if you like. So the Park and Rec Committee accepted most of the changes, pretty much all of the changes, made by the council at the council's last review. And then we submitted it for approval by the council during my review of it as part of the staff report. I made a series of formatting changes to the policy itself, largely just changing city to town and general references to the Park and Rec Committee in favor of the town where appropriate, capitalized the word policy, et cetera. But I did make three substantive changes to the policy. In item number nine, the requirements for accepting donations, I added, "The city manager may accept donations of seventy-five hundred dollars or less. However, the city manager in his or her discretion may refer such items to the city council for consideration of acceptance." There may be items that I look at where I look at them and say, well, you know, I really want the council to actually weigh in on this. And that's why I added that to the policy.
Nice.
Under monetary donations, I added, "The town may also accept earmarked monetary donations for future planned projects." And I also added that all donations to the park foundation in the town are tax deductible to the extent allowed by law. This is also a public document, so the community would be reading it as well. Then, under donation acknowledgements and memorial plaques, I added, "Acknowledgements slash memorial plaques must be approved in advance by the town so that someone's not coming in with a ready-made plaque and expecting us to put it up." And then during my one-on-one sessions, there were some questions related to the inclusion of the fifteen-gallon tree and the possibility of adding a monetary threshold before something is actually eligible for a plaque. The fifteen-gallon tree inclusion is recommended by both the Park and Rec Committee and the town's arborist as these trees end up having better established root systems and oftentimes will grow faster. But the council is welcome to remove that if you so desire. And then the other one is if the council wishes to include a monetary threshold for eligibility for a plaque, you can, of course, do so. That's not the case as the way the policy is currently written. All donations receive some form of recognition or acknowledgement. Field donations, such as benches and trees, typically receive a plaque. A restriction could be added under the donation acknowledgement memorial plaques section and could articulate a base dollar amount that's applicable to all donations. So if it's over thirty-five hundred, then it gets a plaque. If it's less, it doesn't. But you have some things that cost less, and people actually donate them because of the plaque, like a bench or something like that. So you could have it apply to everything, or you could just add that restriction of a monetary amount and apply it only to trees if that's the concern at a particular level. So with that, staffs here, Sally's here, as well as Robert, to answer any of the questions the council may have.
Okay, great. Questions, Bill?
Oh, no questions.
Any questions? Any questions of clarification?
Diane. I have a question.
Diana.
How many plaques do we get? Is this something that there's a lot of?
Fair number.
Because you don't want to go to the park and see.
Sally can address that.
Hi, Sally.
It's gonna be a cemetery.
Sounds like it's on.
So currently, we do not allow plaques for trees. So typically, we only get about one or two plaques a year, and those are for benches.
Could you describe what the plaque, I mean, how, the size of the plaque that you get request for?
For a bench, it's usually pretty small. It's a two-inch by two-inch plaque in the center of the back of the bench. Currently, we just allowed a plaque for a tree that was donated, and it was more like a four-by-five-inch plaque.
And how is that displayed?
It hasn't been installed yet.
Councilwoman Whitmer raises a good question. I mean, Diana, sorry, raises a good question about how many. But I've seen trees, I guess, with a little stump, not a stump, but a little post.
Yeah, we don't do the posts anymore.
So typically, those posts are just for tree ID?
Tree ID.
I was thinking that I would go to Park and Rec for a standard design for the plaque and how it would be installed. So that we have one standard way we install plaques for trees.
Okay, any other questions?
I'm sorry, Mr. Mayor, there's also monuments out there as well, though, right, for projects?
The event garden has some monuments in the past. This is pre my time here. They were monuments for big projects and also rocks, memorial rocks. But that's something Park and Rec has gone away from.
So can, if I may, through the mayor.
Question or comment?
Well, okay, just following up on her response about what the plaques look like and everything. In the event garden, there is a plaque, and it's a bronze plaque, correct?
That's called a monument.
There's two actually there.
And that's called a monument plaque with number and people's names who have donated.
To the event garden.
To the event garden. To the event garden because they wouldn't have had the trees without all those donations. But in the back, there is also a small plaque like that to somebody's dog. And I don't know how I got there. I was surprised when I saw it.
What's a monument, can I ask? What is a monument?
Yeah.
Monument is typically some type of item. Typically, in the park, it's a boulder that has a plaque on it. We have a few of those in the park.
It's a bronze plaque.
The bronze, yeah. So when we do a big project in the park, like the event garden or like the clay court, we do usually offer a plaque or a monument for the project. But we don't offer memorial rocks anymore or monument rocks because in the last of years, Park and Rec didn't want the park to look like a cemetery.
Yes, like a cemetery.
Okay, so one question.
Another question.
Go ahead.
Has there ever been a discussion of coming up with another way to give people, like, we have a donor wall? Is there a way to just people can put their name on one thing instead of every single time? Has there ever been discussion like that?
No, but there was a discussion at one point of doing some bricks in the park, maybe an area in the park where there could be bricks for donations or memorial or something like that, maybe near the pavilion. It's something that we can have Park and Rec review for types of plaques for certain situations.
Any other questions? Okay, so you know, for the questions, is there any public comment on this matter? Okay, I don't see any public comment. Let me bring it back to the council, Bill.
So I got a couple of comments. So first off, I agree with George's changes that he had, you know, raising, lowering the number from ten thousand to seventy-five hundred for things that required his review and approval. You know, as I brought up last time, I don't have a problem if somebody donates, you know, a fifteen-gallon tree. There's no issue with that. The issue with me is that recognizing a fifteen-gallon tree. There was a resident here a number of years ago, Ms. Cooperman, who planted a lot of trees, and she wanted to put plaques on all of them. And, you know, of course, Park and Rec said no. And I think we shouldn't be changing that position. A small tree? No, I think a recognition for a forty-eight gallon, as I said in the last meeting, that's a substantial donation. Whether or not we allow them on benches, okay, fine. They do have these small three-by-five or I think maybe even two and a half by four plaques on some benches. That's fine. You know, there are some things that maybe we want to let get done. But I think that something that gets a plaque should get, you know, should be substantial. Smaller donations, even though there are five-year maintenance agreement, you know, should get, you know, something from the letter from the town thanking them or, you know, like we talked a number of years ago, putting down the bricks. I think that the bricks are a good idea. So that's one comment. The other comment is, you know, I noticed in the review, you're right now in the park, we have natural wood benches. And I understand that over time they deteriorate. And so there was a suggestion here that perhaps we should have the recycled plastic planks. Those get awful hot when they're in the seat, when they're in the sun. And somebody can actually get, you know, I've seen people get burned walking on those planks or sitting on, you know, sitting down on those planks. And I don't think that that's appropriate. You know, I think we should just keep it to natural wood. The picnic tables maybe are a different story because they're going to be in, you know, generally by trees or maybe under trees in the North Meadow or something like that. But but other than that, I had no other comments on it. It's just that, you know, the size of the tree, I think it needs to be substantial. But I agree, we need to recognize, somebody gives money to the town or gives money to the foundation, the foundation always, you know, writes them a letter and thanks them for their donation. I think that we should always do that. I thought it was a good idea when we talked about it with the park renovation to do the brickwork at that entry center where the different trails come together. So anyway, those are my comments. Thank you very much.
Other comments?
I did have one about the plaques must be approved by the town in advance. I think it would be nice to have maybe a uniform design already in place so that that decision doesn't have to be debated every time somebody wants, here, approve this design, approve that design. So maybe Park and Rec might be able to figure something out. I mean, that's my comment about the plaques that must be approved in advance by the town.
Okay, I've got a couple of comments, too. I think there is a design for plaques that has been approved by the Park and Rec, and they're all designed to be the same. I think Park and Rec may be reviewing exactly what that's going to be, but I think you're right. And my understanding is that right now people aren't coming in with different designs. They're put into a standard kind of format. Where the bronze plaques on rocks, which are called memorials or monuments, aren't, there aren't very many of them. The last one that I'm aware of was in the event garden, although there is one other plaque in the event garden I never quite understood.
Yeah, the dog.
Might be the dog. Anyway. So let me understand. I think that the recommended policy would have allowed a plaque and identifying plaque on every tree that is donated. And your recommendation is not to do that, only to do that on forty-eight-inch trees, but that you would be amenable to Park and Rec coming up with some kind of a brick strategy where those other donors would be recognized, even though they wouldn't be recognized directly with the tree that got planted.
Yeah.
Okay, Diana?
Aren't we about to do a recirculation plan where we will have for us some decisions? And that would be a good, to give proposals then at that point?
Yeah. Now, Robert, did you want to say something? You look like you're about to say something.
Does he want a cookie?
Maybe. I'm not trying.
I will have one later. I was just thinking that you were talking about where we have monuments. I believe we have one at one of the park horse stations as well, related to the donation that paid for the park horse at the park as well.
That paid for what?
The park horse.
The park horse.
Yeah.
The exercise. That's cool.
The exercise.
Yeah.
Yeah.
All right.
So I mean, there currently is a brick. Benny, and I think that the direction that the Park and Rec Committee had was really not to have more monuments in the park as well, so consistent with what you're all talking about.
Yeah, okay, so just coming back to my comments, I had four small comments on the written draft that I might as well share now. In on page four of eleven, under the guidelines for existing and new donations under maintenance, says, "Maintenance of the landscaping at tree donation sites." I think we should take the word tree out. We're going to landscape at all the donation sites. The, on the next page, page five of eleven, under policy for new donations, there's the definition of new donations, and we list two types of donations. I think there's a third, which is defined on the next page, and the title of it is monetary donations for specific or non-specific projects. So I think we should list it as a third under the definition since we end up actually describing it. My third comment is on page six of eleven, toward the bottom, under procedure for making a donation, it says, "All monetary donations for specific charge park elements shall be made directly to the town." But in the preamble, we say that both the town and the foundation accept donations for different park activities. So I would change the word shall to may. And finally, under the criteria for, under the trees section on page seven of eleven, we say, "The cost for a tree includes maintenance for up to five years." I just have a question. First of all, I'm not sure we have to include that sentence because I think we define it elsewhere. But my guess is that we maintain trees for their useful life. Probably we don't stop at five years.
Keep that in. We should reward it to say that the donation will fund maintenance of the tree for up to five years.
Right, right. The donation has to be more than just the cost of the tree.
Because for all the donation, for all the tree amounts, I asked our new landscape company, Brightview, for the cost of the material plus install, and then I took that amount and I added for most of the trees. And then I took that amount and I added for, for most of the trees around $3,000 to $3,500 for maintenance.
Yeah, I, my recommendation would be to take the sentence out because I, well, that's, I'm sure that's accurate for the donation amount. I don't want to, someone to then say, "Well, I'd like my tree to last 10 years, so should I increase my donation?" The reality is, we're going to set up irrigation, they're going to be watered as long as they continue to live. That's the, that's all of, and, and I think that Bill's suggestion is good regarding the plaques on trees. I, I, I think we really want to limit how many plaques we have around the park.
I'll make one comment regarding something you said, Mr. Mayor.
Sure.
I, I think your change on adding the foundation in there, I think is an excellent one because people make a lot of donations to the foundation and the foundation then goes and makes major investments in the park. And, and, and I don't think that we should have this imply that if you want to make a donation to something in the park or make a donation for the park, that it has to come to the town. You know, the foundation.
We say in here that it could go to either.
Yeah, and so I.
So the word may is better.
Yeah.
Okay, right, no problem.
I just don't want it to supersede. And I know that you had two foundation members on your, on your committee. So I'm surprised that they weren't sensitive to that.
They give lots of comments.
I'm sure.
What is the current policy with respect to trees and plaques for trees? Does it say no plaques for trees?
So what we currently have been doing is no plaques for trees.
So adding a plaque allowance for 48 inch box or bigger would allow those plaques to occur where they wouldn't otherwise be? Is that your intent?
So 48 inch and 16 inch box trees would be allowed to have plaques?
Well, I think that's a substantial donation.
I can, I have an opinion.
But if, 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 you know, if the town prefers not to put any plaques around trees at all, then that's fine. I'm okay with that. I just didn't want to see plaques on 15 gallon trees.
I do have an opinion on that. Right now, we have a tree walk where you have plaques where you can go and look and see identified species. And I think we should not be memorialized just a donation of a tree that way. I think we should acknowledge people and I think we should come up with a way to do that, but not put a plaque on any more trees because it's just too confusing with the ones we already have.
I'm okay.
So in the, in the early, early days, residents would bring to the park exotic plants and trees from their travels around the world. And they would plant them or they'd plant, you know, the rose. And it would be dedicated by or donated by X, Y, Z. I think over time, that has been, I mean, because they either died, not the resident, but the tree or something. Or it got re-landscaped. So those, or those, those aren't there so much anymore, are they?
Typically don't get those. I've received a few of those in the last seven years. The most significant was the Saghorn fern we got donated from one of the residents that hangs in the large redwood tree by the main house.
Right.
But it also is, it, it, it's a burden on staff and maintenance staff to bring that over. So it depends, I, I think it's on a case by case basis if we're going to accept donation of plant material.
Right. Well, I mean, what I was, my point was, was that they also had their, a little plaque or a little stake in the ground with their name on it, you know? And the name of the tree and the geographic area worldwide where it came from or whatever. And I think that over time that those have been gone away with, I think.
They're not being done now.
So.
They're not doing, being done now. And it would be hard to monetize that value.
Yeah.
To say this one gets a plaque and this one doesn't.
Right, no. So I think that what our goal here, as I understand it, is to kind of, you know, make the park as beautiful as possible and not just be completely placked up and donated, you know, with the memorialization of every tree and shrub.
All right. Councilmember Toledo has his hand up as well.
Who, Bob? Bob, go ahead.
Yeah. Does every tree that gets planted that meets a certain size, I'll use 48 inch because that's been thrown around a bit. Is it going to get one of those posts that says what kind of tree it is? Is that standard procedure?
No, it's only for certain trees. We, in the past, certain trees had plaques. And then when we did the tree walk recently, we added additional trees to that, to have posts. But when we plant trees, we typically don't add a post unless it's something special, if we want to add it to the tree walk.
Okay, so that leads me to my next, the, the follow-up question. What are we going to do? How are you going to hang all these plaques? You going to hang them from a chain or, I mean, what, what's the plan there?
So currently, we don't have a plan because we haven't added any plaques for trees besides the tree ID ones. But those aren't ideal for memorial plaques. So somehow the metal plaque will have to be either in the ground, on something.
If, if there's a plaque for trees.
If there's a plaque for trees.
I think where the council's laid, leaning now is no plaques on any trees.
I thought that's what you recommended, no plaques for trees. So we said, okay.
Currently what was recommended was no plaques for trees. And that's what we currently have been doing. So the only trees that have plaques are maybe from 20 years ago or have the tree ID.
Right.
So through the mayor, I have one more comment. I know that there was a resident when Kathy Hughes Anderson passed away, wanted to donate a, a specimen tree to the park in memorial of her. And I don't know where that ended up at all.
So we did plant a valley oak and two shrubs near the North Meadow path on the backside for Kathy. That was part of Arbor Day, but I'm not sure if that was part of the donation that was in memorial for Kathy.
Right.
There's not a plaque there.
No plaque.
Okay, all right.
So, Bill, so on page seven of 11, under acknowledgement of memorial plaques. If in fact, the interest of the, of the Park and Rec was not to put plaques on trees, then in the sec-, in the second line of the first sentence, we need to remove the word trees. Which is why I keep bringing it up because it's in the documentation that we'll put a plaque on a tree.
True.
And then there was also a suggestion to eliminate plastic.
Plastic benches. I don't know how everybody else feels, but.
I'm, I'm happy about that. I like the wood benches.
Yeah, does it say plastic benches?
Yeah, it's on, on the description of donation page, page appendix A.
Planks right here.
Park bench.
Oh, I see.
So typically, the Park and Rec has only recommended wooden or teak benches. I think this was on here from previous, but I don't think we have any recycled benches in the park currently.
No, we don't, but we should, but it says here, it's got it in the, in the document, so we should remove it. This is where my recommendation is.
My consensus is to, to remove, you want to remove it from both picnic tables and benches?
Picnic tables don't, they're, they're by trees, but it's the pleasure of the council, I guess, the rest of the council. I could leave it in for picnic tables, but not for.
The only thing with picnic tables is there's food on them and wood tends to get cracked and food is kind of a problem on them. Let's face it, there's plenty of wooden picnic tables at municipal parks in this county. I'm fine with plastic.
Okay, just benches.
So we, probably it would be good just to go through the whole thing one more time to make sure that the plaques on trees is not included. And I, I, the, I think that Park and Rec had wanted plaques on trees, right? That, that was a change that, that has definitely been supported by them. So I think it's important to note to them that the council is supportive of them figuring out a recognition area with recognition bricks. And there is a precedent for that in the park because there's recognition bricks at Willie May's field. So my, I don't, I think that.
And throughout the play area, I mean.
Is there in the play area also?
Yeah.
Okay.
We, we contemplated it when we looked at the revision of the park. We, the council at that time said, "Yeah, it's a good idea."
Yeah, okay.
Cederly, does that go in a document like this or is that part of?
We don't, I don't think that needs to change. I just think that, that's for Sally to communicate to Park and Rec. So they don't feel like they've been slighted on the issue.
So we can go through and make those revisions? Do you want us to make those revisions and then return it to council or approve it this evening with those revisions?
Let's approve it with those revisions.
Okay.
I'm good with that.
Okay, I'll, I'll make the motion. A second. We do a roll.
Councilmember Toledo?
I.
Hawkins?
I.
Lewis?
I.
Yes. Okay, we are on the last, but by no means the least item on the agenda, which is discuss the housing element update strategies and to provide direction to staff. And I think Lisa is on Zoom.
Yes, yes.
I am here. George, do you have any introductory comments?
I do not, take it away.
He's not going to bail you out.
Let me share my screen. Okay, can you see the presentation?
Yes.
Yes. Yes.
Okay, great. So the planning commission city council held a joint study session to discuss strategies. And then the city council had three separate meetings to further refine the strategies for the next housing element. And we also hosted a community open house on April 26th to receive community feedback on those strategies. And just to remind you, here are the housing needs allocation as established by the state allocated to the town of Atherton for the next planning cycle, and that is an eight-year period. And then this is an overview of the strategies that have been discussed and recommended by the city council for inclusion in the housing element and how those are allocated by different income categories and our estimated production numbers. So I just wanted to give you an overview of some of the comments that we heard at the community meeting. And these are comments that we received at that community workshop, as well as we had staff attending the Earth Day event. And then the flyer that was mailed out townwide has also generated some email as well as some phone comments. So we're trying to include all of those. And generally, we can kind of group them. So we heard some general concern with the state mandates and that goes to the Reno requirements as well as the new SB 9 ordinance. There was a lot of support for additional accessory dwelling units or ADUs. Some people also talked about opportunities for tax incentives to rent out the ADUs, did affordable rent and other ways to try to incentivize people to build ADUs and rent them out. We heard some concern about the location of the multifamily sites. And then we also talked to some additional property owners at the meeting as well as after the meeting that were actually interested in being considered within that multifamily overlay zone. So these are the sites that were initially discussed by the city council. The first one at 23 Oakwood would be at 20 units an acre. And then we have five properties along Bay at 10 units an acre and five properties along Marsh at 10 units an acre. So what we wanted to talk about is based on that, some options for the city council to consider. One is move forward as planned. So we leave in the Oakwood, Marsh and Bay properties in the draft housing element at the density levels that you previously discussed or consider higher or lower numbers. As I indicated in the staff report, there's some interest from a property owner and a developer to utilize the property at 170 Atherton Avenue for multifamily housing. That property is four acres in area, but the property owner, excuse me, the developer is not interested necessarily in maxing that out, but possibly building 32 units. So one option then is to keep that Oakwood parcel because you do have interest from the property owner. Add in the Atherton Avenue parcel, since you have interest from a developer as well as a property owner. And then you can remove those Martian Bay roads property from consideration. And so if you were to do that option, we anticipate 50 units from those two parcels. And that's 23 units at the 23 Oakwood and 32 at the 170 Atherton Avenue. Another option that we can consider, and we can do this concurrently with what I've laid out as option two, so you can do both, is we can mail a letter to all property owners townwide and see if there's any interest in being considered in this multifamily overlay zone. If the council does want to proceed with mailing a townwide letter and seeing what the interest is, we would do this concurrently with submitting the housing element to HCD because of the timing constraints that we have. And then we can include any additional properties in that revised housing element that would go back to HCD in the fall. So this is kind of staff's recommended approach based on the interest from developers is to proceed with 23 Oakwood and 170 Atherton Avenue and remove the Martian Bay properties from consideration. Housing units in the element. So we'll receive direction from city council tonight. And then we need to really wrap up and publish this housing element because we need to have it available for a 30-day public review and comment period. And this is a new process that HCD has established. Following that public review and comment period, we would make any revisions based on comments we heard. And then work with the city manager to schedule a special city council meeting. Before HCD. And then HCD has 90 days to conduct their review. What I'd like to do during that 90-day review period is retain a consultant to assist the town with the multifamily housing overlay zoning regulations, as well as start considering some objective design standards. The housing element then is targeted for completion at the end of this year and certification in January. Although what we're seeing is it's taken at least two or three rounds CD for other housing elements to get certified. As you may know, the Southern California jurisdictions are a bit ahead of us. So that concludes the presentation and I'd be happy to take any of your questions.
Okay, questions from members of the council? Bill?
Is there a summary of what people put down on the map and things like that? I mean, you, you were collecting a lot of data, but I didn't see other than the fact that you walked around and one area you, people wrote stuff down. I think it was, I think in two locations, how, how to get the stuff rented and, and other comments. And then there was, but, but there was a place where, and I realize a lot of people didn't put stickers down, but there were some. So was there an analysis there of the stickers that went down?
They were pretty well spread throughout the town. There was quite a few adjacent to Palmer Park area, a few in the school sites and not much else. So really was very limited number of stickers placed on the map. But I can certainly, we have a graphic, I can send that to the council members and the city managers weekly.
So you were kind of breaking up, but you said around the schools and, and all the schools or?
At the, the three schools, there were stickers placed adjacent to Holbrook Palmer Park. And then just a couple throughout town, but really not very many stickers.
Okay, all right, okay, all right. So it's not, not significantly valid, okay?
I have a question. Lisa, in regards to next steps and the possibility of mailing a letter to all property owners to see if they want to, you know, join in this deal, what are your, you know, ballpark estimations about what kind of response we might get? So I have that and then a follow-up.
Really tough question to answer. I know at the meeting, I spoke with about three property owners that were interested in being considered in the overlay zone. But one of the challenges is they were asking some very specific zoning type questions, like what are the setbacks? What would the floor area be? Is it okay at 10 or 30 in the back? Could I build three cottages? And so that's my thought is if we could do this concurrently with bringing the zoning code consultant on board and that way they can be more informed as to what the regulations might be. And then they could decide if they really want to opt in or opt out after we've kind of framed what the zoning regulations look like.
Okay.
So I, but I'm sorry, I'm, I'm telling you how many property owners might be interested.
No, but you think there might be interest, yeah.
A few.
Yeah. So in, in reference to the 170 Atherton Avenue. Yeah. So, um, in, in reference to the one seventy Atherton Avenue, um, specifically, um, how, where would the spot zoning regulation come in or does it even apply? Since, you know, I, I'm a little confused and maybe this is a, a question for Mona.
So spot zoning, uh, normally becomes an issue if you are, um, restricting a property that's considered an island as compared to the adjacent neighbors. So for example, if you are going to restrict the zoning in one parcel, but have greater allowances in all of the surrounding parcels, that would be in an improper spot zoning. In this case, um, we're not taking away the single-family residential opportunity. We're adding the ability to also construct multifamily. So I'm not really concerned about, um, spot zoning.
Okay, thank you. I'm done.
Other questions?
I believe councilmember Toledo's got his hand.
Uh, Bob, did you have your hand up?
Yes, I did. Um, Lisa, why, why would you, um, suggest adding possibly the Atherton address? And including automatically to eliminate Marsh Road and, and, uh, Bay Road? It seems to me that the more opportunities to build housing units, the more likely HCD is to give us their blessing. So you're talking about taking out a hundred and seven possible, well, no, not a hundred and seven, but a, a number of, of possible, possible housing sites. Um, and reducing the total number. I, I, I would think we'd leave those in.
Yeah, that's certainly an option. You can certainly leave those in. Um, one scenario to, to keep in mind though is that HCD does want to see that these sites are likely to develop. Um, and so having developer interest really goes a long way with us showing that, you know, it's very likely these sites are going to be developed. Another, um, comment that was raised at the community meeting is, well, some of those properties, I believe on Marsh, were just very recently developed with, um, you know, substantial home improvements, and it feels unlikely those would turn over soon. Um, so I think people were a bit surprised in the selection of those properties. Um, and I don't know if HCD plans on doing, um, site tours as well or Google tours. Um, but I just think these, these two properties feel really good, um, with the development potential. And that's something that HCD would accept.
Some, but some of the Marsh, some of the Marsh Road properties, but not all. And, and, um, similarly, the Bay, the Bay Road property. So I still think the more, the, the more the merrier, so to speak.
Um, questions. I've got three questions. Lisa, uh, you in attached to the staff, uh, report, the housing element update from twenty-fourteen to twenty-twenty-two. And, um, I have three questions on the staff report. The first one is, uh, in the characterization of very low, low, moderate and above moderate, is, is that income or is that rent? Because on table two of the attachment, one category shows income and defines what constitutes extremely low, very low, and so on. And another category defines housing cost, which would be rent. And it defines them by what it calls income categories. So what are we talking about here? Because it, do, do, are we supposed to go find out what the income of each person living in each house in Atherton is? Or are we supposed to find out what the rent is?
So since we do not have, um, housing units that are restricted as affordable, so they don't have some kind of a covenant on them or a deed restriction on them. We've made some assumptions based on what the units are rented at, based on other surveys in other jurisdictions that have been conducted. So for this housing element cycle, HCD has accepted that we can apply thirty percent of the ADUs to very low, thirty percent to low, thirty percent to, um, I just lost track of where I was now.
Thirty, thirty percent of average rent or thirty percent of income?
No, thirty percent of the total of housing that they're recording.
But you're talking two different issues. Lisa's explaining how she got the numbers of ADUs in each category.
I'm not asking about the numbers, right? I'll, I'll comment on the numbers. The question deals with the categories. How do you determine what is very low, low or moderate? Is it based on rent? Or is it based on the resident's income?
Yeah, so the unit needs to be rented at that of rent to an individual that qualifies based on that income. So both of the things need to occur. Yes.
No, but what, what if the rent is a hundred dollars a month and the income is a million dollars a year? And what if you don't know what the income is and you know that the rent is free?
Right. So at this point, we're not required to verify the incomes and not required to verify the rent. We're able to make assumptions based on how units are rented, kind of countywide and other jurisdictions and apply that standard.
So then the, the, the follow-up question would be, if we know that the unit is rented for what would be very, very cheap, say it's worth three thousand dollars and it's rented for a hundred dollars or it's free, then you're telling me we would have a, a reasonable assumption to say it's very low?
We would, in order to, um, if we were audited, then we would need to survey all of the property owners that have ADUs. And they would need to show us what the rent is and the income of the individual.
Well, but maybe they don't have, but the income of the individual is a very private thing. The, the rent is less private because two parties know it. The income, only one party knows it. They're two totally different things. Totally different.
At this point, we, we're not required to verify that. At this point, we're not required to verify that, though. Um, we would, if we adopt an inclusionary ordinance that we're recommending, be partnered with the multifamily ordinance. And then, yes, we're going to have to verify that the rent qualifies as low income or moderate income.
So I'll, I'll, I'll come back to that in comments. Um, my second question is, under the school and facility sites, you have certain numbers here. Uh, under, in, in the attachment, uh, there is a good deal of discussion of the, um, potential for different schools to, uh, uh, to develop the, uh, faculty housing in particular. This was on page nine of the attachment. Uh, the discussion is specific mostly to Menlo College. Uh, and it, it's quite elaborate and there's a hundred and sixty-two units identified. I take it, I, I, how, how do you explain that difference?
I can tell you.
What, I'm sorry, I need you to go back and look at that document.
Lisa, can I just, um, interject? I, I think what you're looking at is the twenty-fourteen, twenty-twenty-two.
I started the conversation with that clarification.
Exactly. And so that's how we got that approved. That is no longer on the table anymore.
Well, maybe it is and maybe it isn't.
We never achieved it.
Because it's already been done and it's, uh,
No, it hasn't been done.
At Menlo College?
No, it wasn't built.
They haven't added it.
They did not, they did not build faculty housing.
They would like to, but they don't have the funding. And so.
That, that was consistently part of our prior housing element updates and in talking with the schools. But it never came to fruition.
Right.
So in this cycle, I don't think we focused on that.
Okay, that's not.
Because they, because we never.
Number for the schools. Yeah, I'm sorry, go ahead.
So my third question is, in, in, in your report, both in the staff report and in your, your PowerPoint today, uh, in summarizing some of the comments that were made at the public meeting, you included the comment, consider property tax incentives for renting ADUs at affordable rates. Is that, do we have any ability to provide property tax incentives?
Not locally.
I wish we did. That's all my questions. Uh, I don't see any more questions. Are there any public comments on this matter? If so, uh, if you're not in the room, uh, you can raise your hand by clicking on the reactions button on the bottom of your screen. And if you're in the room, you can step up to the mic.
And I just let you know that Bob has his hand up, but I don't see anyone.
Oh, Bob has his hand up? Bob, I, I don't, oh, yeah, I see it. I, it's very hard to see the hands on the little screens we have in front of us. Go ahead, Bob.
I have very small hands.
Um.
They're yellow and they, they don't.
The, uh, I had, I did have one last question. I, I, I really didn't understand the, uh, why the prior housing element plan was included in the report since, since all the, you know, there's a lot of eight-year-old data that, that's irrelevant today.
I think I added those attachments. It wasn't Lisa's.
Yeah.
And it was my attachments just as reference information for history for some of the council who weren't here through some of those cycles.
Okay.
And it was much easier back then to do it.
Wait, that's a comment. Okay. Um, so I don't see any public comments, so I'll bring it back to the council for comments. Bill, you can.
Sure. Um, so first off, you know, as we do our report, I know it won't count per se. However, I think it adds to our value if we discuss and we identify in our housing element response about the three hundred beds we're adding at Menlo College. Those are taking people off the streets, some of which are on the streets, living in cars, putting them in beds, and they do get food at a cafeteria. So I think it should be mentioned, although it doesn't count towards our number, first off.
Wait, wait, wait. Before you go on, let me add, because Menlo College specifically said to me that, that, that those beds were taking people out of affordable housing because they're in low-cost housing in the community. And it's freeing up what had been housing rented by students at.
As a professor, I know, I know of several students that were living in cars that I.
No, I'm not, I'm not contradicting that. I'm adding to it.
Yeah.
I'm saying it's also freeing up low-cost housing.
Right, exactly, exactly.
So I think it should be, we should list it. Okay.
Secondly, um, I think that some of the numbers that we're talking about, you, you know, let's talk about the Oakwood. Uh, you know, we've, we've singled that out as a twenty unit per acre. I think that that's too much. I think that there are several concerns that I have, actually with a lot of this stuff, um, is the infrastructure, okay? You put twenty or thirty new condos there. I don't know how large their sewage pipeline is. I don't know about, will it overrun the power grid or the transformers? Will they have enough water being delivered there so that there's a fire down the street? That there'll still be water pressure at the fire? And I realize all that stuff would have to be reviewed downstream. But I do think that twenty per acre at that location is too high. You can still achieve twenty units by saying ten per acre. That gives you sixteen plus four density bonus ones, which then will be in the low-income area, which was something that we're going to need. So that's my, my comment number one.
Can, before you go on to comment number two?
Yeah, yeah.
Can I just, I ask a question about that?
Sure.
And why you are, um, kind of objecting to putting it in the housing element, uh, as a possi, the, the, the twenty unit? Uh, because, you know.
Change it from twenty to ten.
No, I understand. I understand. He doesn't want to, but if it can, um, zoning-wise, uh, accommodate, he doesn't have to build up to twenty. He can build, you know, something smaller and it's, you know, but i- if it would fit in the zoning to have twenty-eight, uh, units and in that location close to Redwood City, it might work really well. All that other infrastructure stuff has to be worked out, you know, with building permits and planning. But I don't see why we wouldn't try to get that passed in the housing element program because it just gives us a little cushion. It's not that, uh, he has to do it or it has, I don't know. I, I just.
Maybe rather than going through a list of comments, we should focus on this comment and let, you, you can come back with further comments on this, but I think this is a big topic.
Yeah.
The issue of the recommendation from planning for twenty per acre, uh, at, uh, twenty-three Oakwood.
With a maximum of thirty, they said.
Well, with, with the density bonus, it would increase it.
Right.
But let, let, let's just focus on that comment. Let other members of the council comment on that.
I agree with Elizabeth on this one. I think this is one that will be developed. I think we need to have ones that are developed. I just rode by tonight back on Marsh Road. And almost all of the slots that we're talking about, almost all are brand-new houses or being constructed. So those are not going to fly. So those, I don't see the point of putting those in. But the two big ones that we know there's interest in should have, in my opinion, should absolutely be in.
And at the maximum.
I, I'd like to comment on it too. Um, I think that twenty, we, we know that twenty-three Oakwood, the, the owner of the property wants to develop it. I absolutely think we should include it in the overlay. I as strongly feel that we should limit it to ten per acre. That would allow up to twenty units on this property, including the density bonus. Uh, we can include twenty. We could include a hundred. It's an overlay. We can do the zoning. We have the authority to do the zoning as we wish. Personally, if it's twenty an acre, that means they could build forty on that property because it's one point six acres and they could get a density bonus. I don't want to see forty properties built on one property in Atherton. I think, and, and we've had a lot of comment at our previous meetings from some residents in the area, uh, who I think have been very supportive of the council because notwithstanding that they don't want to see their area in Atherton developed, they've been supported at a lesser level of development. I feel very strongly we shouldn't authorize more than ten an acre.
Mayor, can I ask you a question? We have a member of the public with his hand raised. Now, I know you already took.
I, I can't hear you.
I'm sorry. There's a member of the public with his hand raised now. I know you already opened it, but.
I, I've taken public comment. I mean, maybe we'll come back and take public comment later, but we, we took a public comment. Uh, I, I want to continue this discussion and, and I can't, I'm, I'm looking to see if Bob has his hand up, but I don't see.
Can I get, I, I, I hear your, your, uh, strong opinion about this and about the density bonus. I was not thinking about that, you know, about the twenty. I thought if you overlaid it for, you know, maximum of twenty, uh, and it, it becomes unreasonable to build up to twenty, then because of the infrastructure, because of all that, you know, then you build as much as you can. And just because you put it in the, a plan, you don't have to actually build that much.
But you're authorized to.
Authorized, right, okay.
You want to authorize them to, then you and I will vote differently on this matter. Because I don't want to authorize them to build forty units on that one property.
I wasn't wanting forty units. I never.
If you, if you set twenty units an acre, you're authorizing forty units.
I didn't know that.
Yeah. Can you explain why that is?
Yeah.
Because one point six times twenty is thirty-two and a twenty percent density bonus or twenty-five percent density bonus is another eight units.
Oh, because it's more than an acre.
Bigger than an acre.
In this case, this is a lot. It's a one point six acre lot.
Okay, but the premise, the premise doesn't change. You're just saying it has to be bigger than.
Than the, yeah.
Yeah, that's right.
It's not twenty an acre then.
So I think ten an acre is the maximum, right?
But so for that property, because it's one point six, it would end up becoming with a density bonus, how many?
A maximum of twenty.
Okay, then we are agreement.
No, but it's not twenty an acre.
No. I was, I was referring specifically to that property.
We're okay with twenty.
Talking about that property.
Yeah, all we're saying is twenty for that lot, not twenty per acre.
Right, twenty for that lot.
Substantially higher.
Yes, okay. No, so we're not in disagreement.
Okay.
So don't be hot with.
I'm not hot.
I'm just, I just feel, this is a very sensitive topic for people that live near it. And I've heard.
Of course.
I heard them at the public meeting and, and I, and.
No, I understand fully now because the one point six plus another eight or something.
So the consensus for twenty-three Oakwood would be ten units per acre.
It's not ten units per acre. Well, yeah, ten, ten.
Ten per acre, one point six acres, four, four additional units for, with a density bonus.
Got it.
Twenty total.
Twenty-five percent density bonus. 25% density bonus.
Which is what in my mind I expect.
We're just giving direction tonight so we can move off that subject.
Okay, good.
Bill had a second comment.
Okay, so, uh, you know, I've mentioned briefly, you know, I think on all these things, we've got to worry about the infrastructure, okay? Um, I'm in favor. I, I know that two people on Bay Road said, hey, not going to happen with my property, but there were, there were five and there were three there that didn't respond and they got told about it. So I, we don't know what the status of that. I'd, I'd rather leave those in and, uh, eight years is a long time. And I, I can't see you taking anybody out other than, you know, I, I realize the brand-new house, the large one on Marsh Road. Sure, okay, there, there might be some.
So your comment is for bo- on both Marsh and Bay?
Well, on, on Marsh, I think there's other properties other than that one that just got built, that big white house, okay? The other ones I think could be included. Atherton have, I've got.
Wait, let, let's stop on that one. Let's comment on Marsh and Bay.
Okay.
I think, alright.
So some of the properties on Marsh are not.
Well, let's go one at a time. Let's do Marsh. These are the three areas we've discussed.
They're not all acre properties.
Let's discuss Marsh.
They're pointing, yeah.
They're, they're smaller than one acre.
Yeah, they're listed.
They're listed as such.
They're listed here as such.
0.79, one acre and three at 0.56.
I just drove by today and there's more than one new house there. Almost all of those are, almost all of them, of the four, we identify. Almost all of them. The, the other one, I couldn't tell from the road what it's like.
Well, they're small. There's three small ones, Councilwoman, that, that, that are half acres.
That's right.
But you have to look at the actual house.
Yeah, I know, and you can't see them all by the house. Uh, they're not all on the road. There's one that said flag lot. So there's no way you got in there and look at it because the gate's closed.
True.
So let, let me make a comment on this because this is what I think about Marsh Road. I, I, I definitely think that the newer properties are not eligible and we need to look at what are eligible properties. But the more I think about Marsh Road, the more concerned I get because Marsh Road is that this is one lane in each direction portion of Marsh Road before it becomes the four lanes. That, that, that one lane in, in the westward direction, which is the right lane, that both of those, that lane in particular gets incredibly stocked up. It's incredibly ingested. And if you had granted that for all 10, all five properties here wouldn't be developed, but if you had even one of the 0.56 acre properties developed and you put five houses in there, you'd be having five times as many automobiles coming onto that street and that street is already hell. So I think we should eliminate Marsh Road.
But you've got, you've got, like, just one last comment. You've got that situation on Bay. You've got that situation if we were going to do something on Middlefield, which at one time we were talking about.
Yeah.
All those roads are chock-a-block at rush hour, morning and afternoon. They all are.
Yeah.
Marsh is no different.
Yeah, I think Mar- I, I disagree. Marsh is, Marsh is 10 times worse than Bay. 10 times worse.
I don't know Bay as well. I don't drive down there. I drive Marsh all the time.
There's no stoplight.
Yeah, I, I, if everybody feels okay, I'll, I'll, I'll pull the, the comment back on Marsh, then fine. I'll go.
But anyway, my position is we shouldn't include Marsh then.
Well, I'll go along with everybody on Marsh. That seems like.
If we don't need it, I wouldn't, I wouldn't put it in.
Okay.
Okay, so when we're on Bay, it sounds like that's a consensus. Bob, do you have your hand up?
No, but.
Go ahead. You can speak. You don't need to.
Elizabeth started talking to me, so I always respond when, when one talks to me.
I love to hear you talk.
I know, I know both those, I mean, I live pretty close to that May, Bay Road intersection and I'm on Marsh all the time. And you're correct, the traffic on Marsh is probably a factor of 10 greater than Bay Road, so. Um, I, 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 I don't know whether that, I'm, I'm not convinced that we shouldn't leave it in the overlay, but, but, but that statement is true. And so if we've got room to pull it out because we're going to add this Atherton Avenue opportunity, then I can see we could, I, I could go along with that.
Marsh Road consensus is removed.
Well, her, her, uh, the planning numbers show us as 82 over the target without considering, uh, any, anything other than what they've recommended.
So, did you talk about Bay?
No, let's talk about Bay. Would you like to comment?
I, I think we should leave Bay in, uh, for a couple of reasons. Um, those five properties and some are newer houses, but not, you know, a big ones, but uh, it's, they all face Bay right now and they're across the street from Flood Park, which is going to be, you know, it would be just perfect for, you know, smaller families and the, the, um, elementary school is just down the street. Uh, and, you know, it's easier. So I see, I can see that that would, um, turn into multifamily pretty easily and close to, uh, Menlo Atherton High School, just down the street. And Laurel, yeah, yeah. So.
Other comments? Oh, I've got a comment. So Bay, yeah, I, I think we should leave Bay in. I agree with that. Uh, the thing I'm focused on is how many units per acre. And, um, Bay backs up to Frederick. And you, you, you know, I, I've received comments from some people that live near those Bay properties. I guess I have a question with, of planning, which is have we, uh, we, we did send the notice to everyone on Bay Road because we sent it to everyone that has been subject to this level of review. Uh, did we hear back from any one of those five properties? Do we have any sense of whether there's any interest in development like we have received at, um, Oakwood?
Bob, uh, did you have a comment from one of those property owners?
Oh, no, not anybody on Bay, no. I had comment from somebody on Frederick. You can imagine what the comment was, but.
Um, yeah, Bill.
Yeah, I, I think, first off, those are smaller than an acre lot. And I know that, uh, Lisa downgraded them to nine units. Perhaps it would, might be more prudent to have eight units on those.
Or if we had six, it would be five per, per lot.
That would be good. And that would include also the Ringwood.
Yeah, I, I guess I would be more comfortable recommending six units per acre as an overlay for those properties. I agree.
So can I ask a question, uh, since we're kind of designing this in six years or whatever? I, but when the properties, um, back up to another neighboring property like on Frederick, could we create a, a rear setback situation where they would have, it would have to be a, you know, a, a deeper setback?
I don't know. I, I don't know how much flexibility we have. There, there is this four-foot setback issue in SB 9. And I think that the ADU ordinance says that anyone can build a four-foot setback with a four. Isn't that accurate?
Yeah, but see, that's just an ADU.
But, but if you allow, I don't know, if you allowed five properties per acre, does that five principal residences and each one of those would be able to build an ADU?
No.
They, they would be single-family residential, multi-family residential, yes. So they'd have all the same rights, subject to all the same setback requirements, but Lisa was going to engage a design consultant to assist with the land use zoning regulations for setbacks and objective design standards. And that would, where, that's where we would flush those details out.
Well, 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 maybe this is a broad question then, uh, which is when we're doing the overlay, we're, we're not taking away the single-family zoning, we're adding the overlay zoning. When we add the overlay zoning, irregardless of how many units are authorized as a maximum in, in the overlay, can each one of those separate units automatically by state law build an ADU?
So I'd be happy to respond. Sorry, I was trying to raise my hand.
Yes, you did. I see it.
Go ahead.
Okay. Um, so a couple of scenarios. Let's just say we take one of the Marsh Road properties that's half an acre. Um, if they want to remain as a single-family residence, they could do so and build a detached ADU. If they wanted to, um, trigger that our newly adopted SB 9 implementing ordinance, they could do that. So they could split that half an acre into two new lots and on each of those, they could build two new units, right? So we would then have a total of four units on half an acre, which is essentially eight units an acre. So the six units an acre doesn't get you a lot when you can already develop it under kind of a, a six-unit-an-acre scenario, right? Um, so the other scenario is if we develop the new overlay zone and, um, we would establish zoning regulations for that overlay zone. And we would have the new setbacks and the new height limits and it would be very specific to the overlay zone. So that's what we're retaining the consultant to help with.
Does that, does that say you could design an overlay zone so that they, if they trigger the overlay zone zoning, they could not build an ADU unless that was explicitly allowed in the overlay zone zoning?
Yes.
The setback. This, we could have, we could have a setback.
Correct. I need to take another look at state law to see if ADUs are permitted in multifamily zoning regulations. I need to take another look at that.
I think they are.
Your ADU and JDUs are connected to single-family residential. It's a, it's a little bit of a complicated answer because, um, if you have an overlay, technically you can also build single-family residential. So it's going to be a, a fact-specific inquiry. If someone comes before us and wants to build multifamily under the overlay, they do not get to also build the ADU, JDUs.
That's okay.
Okay, that's, thank you.
So like Oakwood, it backs up to that cul-de-sac on Sabalo, okay? And so they, you know, so those residents could be impacted with, you know, the height of and the, the setback, the rear of those, uh, new units. So if we have a, you know, a bigger rear setback that these big townhomes can't be built four feet away from the fence of your back neighbor. So I think if, if that can be fleshed out legally, I, I think that would make me feel a lot better. Right, Diana? You'd feel better about that.
Absolutely.
That would make people at Frederick feel better too.
Mm-hmm, mm-hmm. Okay. Are we making progress?
Well, Bay Road.
So on Bay Road, um, so Lisa said six units per acre wouldn't yield a whole lot because these are 0.9 acre lots. Six units an acre under the overlay zoning would allow someone to put five units on that lot. If, I mean, if they, but our concept of the overlay zoning, and I, I suppose that a developer could do something different, but maybe not if we zone for it properly. Our concept of the overlay zoning is to allow townhomes to be built.
Yes.
So it, it, the idea is that there would be a little community of residences on this 0.9 acre parcel, all of which would be relatively similar and they would probably collectively manage the landscaping.
And that's different than an SB 9 split.
And that's different from an SB 9 split, so while that, if we allowed six units an acre there, then they could build five units that would all be these townhomes. That's quite a bit different than an SB 9 split, which is you end up with 2.45 acre parcels and you get to build a house and a ADU essentially.
Right.
On each of those lots.
Yeah, and a developer wouldn't want to buy all of them and then do splits.
Yeah, and, and, and one of those lots has to be lived in by the owner. Whereas in, in the overlay zoning, you can sell it all to a developer and the owner can walk away with the sales price.
And to Councilmember Lewis's point, we'd have more control over the.
Right.
Design and setbacks.
So, so on Bay Road, let's talk about what we think. And, and I'm just coming up, you know, we're, we're all just individuals up here and I'm coming up with six units per acre because it yields five units on each of those 0.9 acre parcels and I'm trying not to adversely impact the Frederick homeowners or the next-door neighbor on Bay who doesn't want to develop five units. Bob has his hand up.
Yeah, I, I just want to make sure because I, I, I think it's still a little gray in this conversation piece. My assumption is if we do an overlay for multifamily, that parcel can still be treated as single-family. They can still do a SB 9. They can still build things four feet from the edge of their property and we have no control over. However, if it's, i- if it is actually converted to multifamily, I'm assuming we, we have a whole new set of rules that, that, that we can plug in that eliminates four-foot setbacks, that, that requires bigger setbacks in, and, and different height limitations, et cetera. Is that not correct, Lisa?
That's correct. And what we're going to do when we try to evaluate what the zoning regulations would be is kind of run some feasibility analysis to see what's the largest setback we can get and still make the lot developable. Um, and so, yes, we intend to do larger than four feet.
Right. So, so I, I, I think that the multifamily element, there will be a lot of effort put into making sure that we, that we, that we write the code for that in such a way to minimize the impact from Bay to Frederick or from Oakwood to that other little cul-de-sac back there or wherever else we, we implement it.
That's good.
I have a question.
Yeah.
Is it, is it conceivable that we make one set of rules that we decide that if we are going to do a multi-dwelling overlay, this is what it is and it's for all of our overlays? So instead of saying, well, on this area, let's do this and over here in Bay, let's do that. Is it conceivable to make a set of rules that just says?
I think it has to be.
By having different.
Mona's going to say something.
They got to be one.
Mona? So that's what we would actually have to do. We can't, um, cherry pick what design standards apply to which section. Um, for most communities, they already have kind of an assortment of land uses. They have multifamily, single-family residential. And so when they, um, plan for multifamily, the de facto is you have to comply with the multifamily um, height, setback, architectural features. For Atherton, those will be simultaneously developed, um, as you come up and, and conclude how you want your housing element to look like. And then whatever you decide for multifamily will be applied automatically to any application that comes before you.
So when we talked about the, uh, Oakwood one at how many units per acre?
Right.
Why are we not just applying that same premise here?
That's exactly where I was going to push back on Rick about.
Because I think, I think this is a different situation than Oakwood. I think that Oakwood is right next to Redwood City. This is across, and there's some multifamily residences to the left as you go around the Oakwood circle. This is across the street from smaller properties in Menlo Park, but I'm not aware that there's any multifamily right there. I think they're different.
But, but it sounds like Mona says we have to do.
Yeah.
There has to be a single standard for multifamily.
I'm, I'm hearing slightly different things. I'm hearing that a difference between density versus design standards. So the design standards are your height, setback, paint color, if you will, landscaping and so forth. And then density is how many can we develop on there?
Yeah, and you can do different densities.
You can do different densities based on fact, on objective factors that you determine. For example, we think that the surrounding uses, um, in Oakwood warrant X density, but we think that the surrounding uses along Bay warrant a different density. But as long as they're not, but as, but as long as you, you know, make findings to support it, that's okay.
Okay.
Yeah.
General. Alright. Okay, uh, so anyway, that, I, I would propose that for Bay, we authorize five units per acre. I thought you said six. I mean, six units per acre, which results in five units per property.
Well, let's think about.
And that's a different density than we've agreed to for 23 Oakwood, which we're authorized to do.
Okay, well, let's think about maybe the design. So if you have six townhomes, six, you know, individual, uh, you know, not units, but apartments, condos or whatever, that works better than five, right?
I don't know, does it?
Well, I think, you know, symmetrically and design-wise, I think.
I think. I feel like we're being arbitrary and when.
The right number.
Six per acre or six units?
Six units is what we're having.
But I feel like you're making that up. When they. But I feel like you're making that up. When they, when we had the design in that public meeting, there were literally examples that are kind of cookie cutter templates. We're not even considering those. We're just kind of arbitrarily saying, well, I think this would be. So I would feel better if we had some criteria by which we're doing it. Maybe some of the documents that they presented to the public at that meeting. You know what I'm talking about where they had the pictures?
You're just developing a, a density for the particular lots. And, and even if it is six units per acre, it may only develop at three or four.
Right, it's a maximum.
Right.
This is maximum. You can't guarantee you're going to get the maximum. They just can't do more. So the issue is if we were to authorize six units per acre, the maximum they could build would be five. If we were, I assume that's right, Lisa. If, if, if you multiply a point nine four acre property times a maximum density, end up with, uh, with a fraction, I assume i- it's the whole number that counts. The fraction doesn't count. Is that accurate? Or do you round when we're?
Well, it's how we, it's how we just choose to define it in the, the new zoning code. Um, but you could say, no, it's, it's got to be a whole number and it can't be rounding up. But it's, it's how you choose to define that in the code.
I would take the position that we shouldn't let people round up. We don't want to maximize it. We should set a number of density that we know a maximum, so it, it's certain. Uh, on Oakwood, it's ten times one point six plus a twenty-five percent density. Here it would be X times, uh, either point nine four, point nine two. So I just did the math. If, if you authorize seven per acre, it would be six units. If you authorize six per acre, it'd be five units.
I think we should just focus on the maximum development capacity. This lot can have six units or seven units or eight units. As opposed to doing all, you know, I mean, I mean, I, I love math.
You have to have a criteria. And so all of these are what you'd call an Atherton acre. It's like point nine two, right? So one's point nine. So at ten units, you would get nine, ten units an acre. Yeah, right.
But we think it should be smaller.
I think it should be nine units and then you'd get eight. I like the round number.
I think that's too many.
And that's just your gut level. I'd like to see, I'd like to see a, um, a rendering of what
Yes, that's what I was trying to say.
Because if there's one bedrooms or two bedrooms, you know, maybe a studio and you would have that.
In the interest of time, I don't think we have the, the time to go through and get a rendering for that. If you want to leave it off the list and you could add it at a later point.
I'm not interested.
That suggestion, we could come back with that sort of detail.
Can we call those drawings? I'd rather give a number and we can always come back and change it, but I'd rather have a number now. Okay?
Yeah, so if, if, I'm sorry, really quick. I hate to interrupt, but if you're going to come up with a number, I'd rather you do it low and then raise it later rather than give something to HCD and lower it.
Okay.
I would propose six units an acre.
All right.
I'll agree with that then. No, not six units an acre.
Six units an acre. That's what I proposed.
Oh, because then you're only going to get five.
Then you'll get five.
I'm okay with that.
Okay.
Bob?
Yeah, I can live with that.
All right, there we go, done.
Okay, so that addresses the five properties on Bay, which is really four on Bay and one on Ringwood, I guess. That addresses Marsh, which we took off. That addresses twenty-three Oakwood. Let's talk about other properties, both.
Atherton Ave and.
And, uh, the Tuscaloosa property?
No.
The Atherton Ave is referenced in the report.
Um, which is one of the things I wanted to talk about. First off, I, I have mixed feelings about the Atherton Ave one. I, I understand the write-up said that the neighbors are all in agreement. So that's a little bit different, but.
Well, the property owners.
Yeah.
It's not the neighbor. I don't think the neighbors have been polled.
Okay.
It's the property owner who's selling the property.
But my, I, I have some heartburn. We, we've spent a lot of time on what we want to do and carefully took input and, and some of the input was rather harshly given. Um, but we did take it and, uh, you know, I'm just not interested in, you know, just any Tom, Dick and Harry decides, oh, I want an overlay. And the neighbors can't do anything about it. I don't agree with that. We're trying to manage the town. We're trying to manage the look and feel of our town. And we're trying to also take, uh, input from, from the, from the residents of what they want the town to transition to. And over time, it will continue to transition. We get that. But at the same time, just having somebody, any Tom, Dick and Harry or anybody else decide that they want to go ahead and I, you know, I think I'm going to sell my property and have it developed. So I want to, I want to have an overlay of, uh, you know, of ten, ten things per acre and then just leave that just in the middle. So we have absolutely no zoning, just like they have down in Atlanta and in Houston and places like that, and it's a mess. And so I don't, I don't, I'm not in agreement with just having people apply. Um, if, if in fact they apply and there is a consensus of the neighbors that say, yeah, this is a good idea. Um, you know, I think that we should, the council at that time should consider that. But not just anybody sends it in and say, okay, yeah, no problem. We're just going to give you blanket approval to say, yeah, give them ten because they got ten acres.
So it sounds like that comment is opposing the idea of sending the letter to anyone in Atherton to see anyone who might be interested.
Right.
Yeah, I am opposed to that. Okay, that's fine. I'm, I'm just clarifying what, because you're not really commenting
or, or use including one seventy Atherton.
No, I'm commenting on that. I'm commenting on the first one. If you want to talk about one seventy Atherton, um, you know, all I have is the information that, you know, that Rick, you mentioned yesterday at your office hours and, and, uh, information that Lisa included in the staff report. But I don't know, do the neighbors know about it? Do all the neighbors know about it? And have they weighed in? Or are we going to have a firestorm of people coming into here and discussing it with us and saying how we've wrecked Atherton Ave?
So through the mayor, can I make a comment?
So we're talking about other, including one seventy Atherton.
Well, but the concept that Councilmember Widmer, Vice Mayor, uh, was just saying that he is heatedly opposed to is any Tom, Dick or Harry saying, I've got an acre of lot or I'm going to buy this and I want to develop it. That's exactly what, uh, Oakwood did. I mean, he, he came to us and said, I've got this property and here's my plans. And, you know, months ago and said, you know, I'm ready to go. So I mean, that's the first one that's always on the list. So that runs contrary to your feelings about this. And also the recommendation of our city planner to, as a, uh, follow up to with our residents after we start filing this thing, to go out and poll other people to see what interest there is in developing their property.
But that, but that owner went ahead and reached out to all the neighbors and that owner, if I could finish, if I could finish.
No, I understand you can.
And we, we considered whether or not we wanted to allow that based on the proximity of what was around it. So that, that owner may have said, I'd like to do it, but there was a lot of analysis before we decided to go do that. We could have said no.
Understand.
Okay, so I think it's different than just saying now, somebody can send a letter in and says, I'd like to apply for an overlay.
On, on, on the letter, I, I feel strongly that we should send out a letter, but the letter should just describe what our philosophy is. And if you remember, we started off saying we want it to be close proximity to density and we should start with that. So we should say, this is our philosophy we're applying and then see how many people come forward. There may be other properties we haven't even considered that are within what we're considering, what we would like to see happen. And then I do think we have to consider people who are, I mean, how are we going to get out of the situation we're in? We have to consider each case that comes up and decide if it's worthwhile or not.
So that's a question. The next step, we're, we're going to finalize direction tonight. Uh, planning is then going to prepare the proposed housing element that, uh, will be sent to the state HCD. But before that, it has to be published to the public for thirty days. And does it get sent to every member of the public in a notice? Or is it just published in a newspaper? What, what does publish to the public mean?
Lisa?
Um, I don't believe it's defined, but we would need to advertise its availability. So we would certainly, um, use our at least social media blogs, post it on the website, um, put a, a public notice in the, in the, um, newspaper. Um, and depending on the direction of the council, we could also send out some information townwide.
So i- if we were.
It's not required to, you're not required to do a townwide mailing. You're just required to make it available.
Okay, so let's discuss that issue after we discuss the specific properties. Sort of what, what we would want to say to others. I guess two comments. I, I, I've got comments on the idea of the uh, contemplated mailing to property owners soliciting interest in multifamily overlay zone that's in the staff report. I'll wait to comment on that until we get to that after we do the specific properties. On one seventy Atherton Avenue, you know, uh, uh, irregardless of what the dense maximum density we would allow, I think that the staff report suggested ten per acre. But then it said that the maximum number of units the developer contemplated for the four acres would be thirty-two units, which sounds like eight per acre. Uh, knowing the developer, I doubt that they would want to take advantage of a density bonus. Uh, because, uh, I know that they're contemplating that that property would sell for not affordable dollar amounts. Um, but this is what I thought about. When I, Bill started off the questioning for this whole topic with a question about infrastructure and whether, what would the impact of the contemplated overlay zone be on our infrastructure? For example, the sewer where I understand there was a new multifamily development in Menlo Park where they went in to, uh, add the new connection to the sewer. And they couldn't connect because the sewer was totally full all the time. It was just overloaded. And, uh, and, you know, we, we have some limitations on sewers, uh, on water, water pressure, power. How does all that play out when, when we suddenly add a, you know, what, a twenty unit to any different housing units? Well, there's another infrastructure issue that I thought about, which is, well, our garbage gets picked up once a week. And we have three different kinds of cans. I don't think the green cans are going to be a problem. They're going to be about the same number of green cans for that one point six acres. If there's twenty different housing units on it or one housing unit, they're going to generate roughly about the same amount of stuff for the green bins. But what about the blue bins? Are there now going to be twenty blue bins and twenty black bins? Or are they going to have to put their garbage into a common black bin? Well.
A dumpster kind of thing.
Well, I don't know. You, you're a developer, I'm not.
Well, I.
So I, I don't know, but I'm thinking Atherton Avenue and I'm thinking thirty-two blue bins and thirty-two.
Well, that would be ridiculous. It would be ridiculous.
It is. That's like the green bins.
Yeah, so.
One real topic off of that is that it's, they're using well water. And now you're talking a couple residents using the water table. If you put in that many units, that is significant. And I, we, I was talking to George, I don't even know how well that's managed. You know, you, you could take our water table down significantly. I don't know how that's controlled.
Drinking well water.
No, the well water is not drinking. It's irrigation.
But they can use it for landscaping, but they could, if they're accessing it now, there won't be.
So you don't think it'd make much difference?
Our vice mayor and our mayor make very, very important observations here. And we, as a small town here, uh, looking at that, that we're a little drop in the bucket compared to these other jurisdictions that have thousands of housing units to develop. They don't have the infrastructure at all. I mean, to build what they are saying that they are going to plan to build, they, I mean, Brisbane, Millbrae, you know, they don't have those, that, the infrastructure. And that's what we've been going and at C-Keg and railing against the state legislature and A-Bag over and over that this is ridiculous for them to mandate these kinds of numbers of new housing. Uh, so without, there's not a solution.
So, so let me do, I, I, I'll give my comment on one seventy. I, I mean, I like it that a developer, uh, the quality of Peninsula, Pacific Peninsula group, which, you know, they're the biggest developer in town, right? They're probably, I don't know, they've probably got ten or twelve properties going at any one time, just about. Um, that, and, and they've developed a lot of property in town. I think that's a big deal. I think there is absolutely a market in Atherton for a three thousand square foot, single family residence in a town home community where you don't have to take care of the landscaping, but, uh, you can be in a little community. Uh, I think there is that market. I think there's, I, I heard it at the public meeting. I've gotten a dozen emails from people telling me that they're interested in that kind of housing. So I'm very open to that kind of housing. I'm very concerned about including in this, uh, initial filing, one seventy Atherton Avenue, when we haven't reached out to other people. I had, did hear from a couple of people that live around one seventy that feel concerned about the impact on Atherton Avenue. Uh, and, and I know that in the past, we've had discussions with quite a good sized community on Atherton Avenue worried about the traffic and the speed of cars on Atherton Avenue. Now you could say putting a thirty-two unit, uh, uh, town home community in the middle of Atherton Avenue, which this would be, would slow the traffic down. That's probably true. It would definitely increase the congestion. So I, 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 I'm not opposed to it, uh, but I'm not sure I want to include it in this filing. I think I'd like to get some information from other Atherton Avenue residents. I would be willing to include in this filing, the property that was the vineyard. Um, I don't think we've reached out to the property owner. Uh, I, I, I think we should, but that property is a little bit more on the periphery. Uh, Alameda at times of the day is very busy. I don't know if that property would front onto Tuscaloosa or, or.
Bohemian.
I would also.
I'm bohemian.
Sorry, I would, I would include the one on Valpriso that's been vacant for years. They're trying to sell it at nine million dollars and so maybe a developer wants to develop it.
Well, that's kind of like in the middle of, uh, the road there and the same thing.
No, 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 that's, that's on the corner.
No, it will. There is a corner. It's Santiago. It's Santiago.
No, the corner of Santiago and Valprisa.
Right, yeah, no, yeah, yeah. I don't think it would be as discreet as, uh, the, the ones on, on Atherton Avenue. Uh, it'd be very.
Well, it doesn't have developer interest at this moment.
No, I can understand. And it is, yeah, I, I.
If the council removes one seventy, the one with developer interest, which would really appeal to HCD. Uh, and if you did not add any other properties, I would suggest you consider adding back Marsh Road and upping Bay back to what the recommendation was, just so we have that buffer. Or we're going to be back to HCD just saying flat out, no, you've got no developer interest. You've got no properties.
I don't know why you wouldn't want to, uh, add, uh, one seventy at this point.
Well, could we add the vineyard, even though we haven't?
You can put overlays.
We don't have, we don't have, uh, owner, um, approval on that.
Well, I think on some of these other pieces of property, we don't have owner.
I, I wouldn't, I wouldn't do it. I wouldn't do it. It's too significant.
Well, we're, our numbers are eighty-two over and if we remove Marsh Road, I, I don't know what they've included. From the overlay, they show twenty-six units uh, is what they're showing and, and where Oakwood is twenty units. So I suppose six units would be one of the Bay units. That's imaginable. That fits into the planning group. I, I, I think taking Marsh Road out doesn't change the numbers.
Well, I think the, the density proposed maximum volume capacity along Marsh was seventeen plus fifteen was thirty-two units.
Yeah, no, but Marsh is, if you take Marsh out, it doesn't matter. It, i- if you look at the table above, they're saying the townhouse overlay results in twenty. It, i- if you look at the table above, they're saying the townhouse overlay results in twenty-six units. Right? That's what it said. That's what the table says.
Bay at ten and Marsh at ten units an acre. And that was our estimation. Um, but I think we've expressed before our concern, oh, sorry.
No, the number, the number in the table says that they're not, notwithstanding what's in the lower table, the number in the up, in the upper table is twenty-six units.
Yes, it's twenty-six based on what staff estimates would develop over the next eight years.
Right.
But the maximum development would carry forward into future cycles and-
No, 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 we're just dealing with this cycle. But twenty-six units is Oakwood plus one bay property. That's twenty-six units.
Yes, that's right. Yeah, assuming they get-
Suggesting just doing Oakwood and Bay and not the?
Uh, I'm comfortable with that. I think it doesn't change the number that we're showing to HCD.
Well, I, as you go through the process, you have more rather than less, so.
Have it. We're eighty-two over.
Well, yeah, but you've reduced the number of units that you're, we're going to use on Bay. Um, so I, I, I don't think the numbers are the same. You're not quote, you're not talking apples to apples now.
No, but there, but there, there's twenty-six units. One unit on Bay would be five. One unit on Oakwood would be twenty. That's twenty-five. So we reduce it by one.
A- a- assuming they get the density bonus and, and max out.
Uh, yeah, I suppose if, if there was a density bonus on Bay, it wouldn't even need to reduce it by one. They'd get one additional unit if they use the density box.
If we submit just those two, and then we later discuss whether we want to accept one seventy, what's the procedure for that? How does that work?
What was that question? One more time?
If we, we put in the proposal only the, the two, we don't put the one seventy in at this time. But that developer comes forward, we then proceed with community discussions and the community thinks it's a good idea. How does that work? Do we then add it later or?
We add it when our, when our initial proposal is rejected by HCD.
Exactly, right.
It becomes dry powder for us.
It will be.
So not putting it right now spies us time to do the procedure with one seventy.
There's, there, there is that approach. You could submit something to HCD, knowing that it's going to get rejected as we think it may be. And then add some other things later that you had some time to talk with neighbors about. I mean, it's, it's just-
And we could get the feedback from this letter where people are, if we say to them, we're looking at these, within these guidelines. And we may get some other things we hadn't even thought of.
Yeah, I think that's good. What, why don't we, why don't we include just Oakwood and Bay? It, I don't think it changes the numbers at all because they end up being twenty-six. Uh, we've taken out Marsh Road. We've reduced the numbers per unit on both Oakwood and Bay. But it still comes out to twenty-six. And, uh, and we talked to both the property owners and we evaluate how to talk to neighbors for one seventy Atherton Avenue for the, the Tuscaloosa property and for the Valparaiso property.
When we started this process, we tried to-
I don't know Tuscaloosa.
T- Pohemus, sorry, Pohemus.
You kept saying, yeah.
The Pohemus property. We talked to Ann Ramsey. She owns it.
Did you talk to her?
No.
No.
Did you?
Well, no, but I mean, I have. She's coming to the dinner.
I know.
I wanted to remind us that when we started this process, we started with a set of principles. And the principles were, in our ideal, there were certain kinds of developments we wanted to see. Ones for elderly, one for teachers. These are the kinds of things we want. So as a town. The second thing is how do we want the development to happen? And we talked about continuing around the periphery because it was already dense. So those were the principles we went with. We heard some of the citizens say, well, that's not fair. Why are there ones in the middle? Which those people would like the one seventy. But if we started with these set of principles, I think we should go with that. But then get more information as we, from the residents and see where we go and, and turn it around one more time. Because I'm not opposed to one seventy, but given what we originally started with, it's right in the middle of town. It's not on the periphery. It's not near dense housing. So all the criteria we ourselves set, it doesn't qualify. But that being said, I like the idea myself, but let's just go through the process.
Yeah, so, look, I, I can be convinced that one seventy is the right thing to do. And if, if the people that live around it and knowing the, the people that are going to build it, I'm sure it's going to be done very, very nice and it might fit in, provided the infrastructure. In accordance with what was just said, we started out with a certain number of principles. So then just sending a letter out to all the community and say, well, what do you think? Where do you want to have it? And so now we're going to get things all over the place. I mean, there are some logical places that we talked about that we should possibly consider if we need to, to rezone. Maybe some places along ECR, maybe some places along some other borders. That's what we talked about. Now we're saying it doesn't matter. Somebody has a, you know, gets a wild hair and says, you know what? I'd like to move out of town. So I, I've talked to a developer and they've got an idea to build townhouses right here in the middle of wherever it is. Okay? And we say, oh, that's great. I don't think that that's right. I don't think that that's right. I think we need to have, maintain some sort of zoning for our, for our look and feel. And that's what people, when people move to Atherton, they understand that the investment that they make is going to be protected in some manner. Because of the zoning and because of what our ideals are. And just saying that your neighbor wants to decide to sell his house that, and, and, or go into the rental business because he's got a house in, say, Idaho. And yet, and build a bunch of townhouses and become a landlord right in the middle of some clay court, for example, I don't think is right. I just don't.
Well, the letter, we talked about sending it out based on our principles. So I'm arguing that we sent out a, a blanket thing based on, and, and an explanation of what we're talking about.
But we should discuss if we're, we're, we're not obligated to send a letter. We're just obligated to notice the public of what the housing element zoning proposal is. And we are, need to do that in the press, you know, in the newspapers, whether we send out a letter or not, I think. Uh-
Yeah, no, you're absolutely right about that. But I think what-
No, so we're talking about a letter and-
You know, whether or not that's a good idea. And I have mixed feelings about it because on one hand, we want to, uh, be egalitarian to everybody. I mean, if we've, you know, allowed, uh, a couple of developers and owners of property to come to us and say, hey, I want to do this, right? And here's my property. And just because it happens to kind of be within our general principle guidelines that we've kind of set out that that works or not, then, you know, we, we become very arbitrary. And, you know, uh, kind of, I don't want to look like we're, uh, playing favorites.
If I could add a little bit more detail to that, um, Meritable, you're right.
A little bit.
There's, um, two, um, issues. The first one is after, um, planning staff develops the draft housing element. Um, there's no specificity in the government code as to how we make that public. But presumably we posted on the website and we inform the residents that it's available. If we actually receive comments back, then we have to wait another ten business days before we can move forward. And we have to have an opportunity to be able to respond. Any responses need to be provided to anyone who's made a comment with a direct link as to the revised housing element as we receive it. If the council wishes to consider, um, allowing residents to submit applications for your consideration, I highly recommend establishing before you send that letter out the, um, uh, parameters for which the council is making decisions. Because at that point, it could be considered arbitrary or spot zoning because we would literally be looking at, you know, individual homes. You can look at things like accessibility to infrastructure, the availability, the availability of parking, um, impact on, um, adjacent neighbors, um, proximity to transit. I mean, there's a whole host of things. And if that's the direction of the council, um, we can help, uh, provide that, right?
All right, good, okay.
Well, let me, I mean, let me clarify that. So, uh, uh, clearly we need to indicate to the public what the housing element is and give them probably the website where they can find it.
Correct.
And solicit them to, um, give us any comments or thoughts that they may have. And I understand that if we get a comment, then we're obligated to, um, have a ten day waiting periods subsequent to that comment before we actually send the final plan to the state. And I would guess we probably, do we have to respond to the person?
We are not required, but we may.
Okay, so if we, so then you said if we choose to send out a letter, which I'm sure we wouldn't be sending the housing element in the letter, we just reference a website link that would give people the access to the housing element. But if in the letter, we gave a summary description of what is proposed in the housing element, which is, we're basically satisfying this housing element principally through ADUs and through these other three or four subcategories. One of which is a new zoning arrangement in Atherton, which would be overlay townhouse zoning, which wouldn't take away single family resident zoning, but would enable the property owner of that property to develop townhouses to a maximum density allowed for that area. And, and so that would be a summary.
Mm-hmm.
Uh, we, now, could we also say, uh, we are considering where the, this overlay would be appropriate? We have authorized it at two general locations, one on Oakwood and, and, and five properties on Bay Road. Um, we may remove the, any of those in the final housing element, or we may add others. And if we were to add others, uh, we have considered areas that are either on the periphery of town, which I think Oakwood is, it's not an arterial street, I don't think. I know, but it, I don't think it's, or are on arterial streets, which, uh, Bay would qualify as and which the Alameda, Valparaiso and Atherton Avenue properties would qualify as if we said that, that they're either on the periphery or on arterial streets. And we could say if, I don't know that we would want to identify those properties in a letter. But we could say if we wanted to, if, if you are a property owner and, and satisfy that and you're interested, you can let us know. But I don't know if we should do that.
I would, I would treat them separate and distinct because we don't, we also don't want to potentially, um, create issues with HCD, um, in, in making HCD think that this is tentative, that we're potentially going to pull back, um,
Okay.
Uh, units-
Well, we don't have to say we can take them away, but I think we could in the final-
Right, we can. But what I would do is I would, you know, uh, notify the public, this is our draft housing element.
And yes.
These are the factors that we use to do this. This is what we're doing. And separately, if and when the council wants, you can pursue additional properties to consider by saying, if you are interested in having your property considered, these are the criteria that we are looking at. We're looking at arterials, the periphery of town, you know, whatever you want. And we are expecting applications not later than, you know, fill in the date. And at that point, you can consider whatever you've had and see, do these meet the criteria that we have established? But, but treat them separately and not as, as one fell swoop.
But we'd have to be very careful that we're not, you know, that we just, that if we create these criteria that we, and a property meets those criteria and we say, no, we don't want to do that.
Yeah, I see.
But you know-
I think we just asked for comments. Here's our housing element. We're required by law. You know, we had this per, private meeting or public meeting and we want to have your comments. And we look forward to hearing. But, but do you think we should say in that letter, this is what the housing element includes? And do a summary because there's five elements. I think principally ADU, everybody supports. Oh, yeah, I agree with, uh, give a brief summary of it, but I'm not, I'm not into soliciting, hey, by the way- So two different things, two different things.
Yeah.
No problem.
I mean, I feel that we're going to get ourselves caught.
I, I'm worried about that.
Yeah.
When we get the consultant to do the criteria for our multi-units, could we, at that point, consider the idea of doing a design review? I know that Atherton does not do that.
Yeah.
But now we're creating a new type of housing. Does, do we have the right to consider design review? Again, is that back on the table?
Uh, yeah, I brought that up before.
Yeah.
It can be back on the table. That was one of the feedback, by the way, that we got from some of the residents at the thing.
Yeah.
That we should have design review if we're going to do this different kind of thing.
I brought that up at our very first meeting.
Yes.
Mona?
Nice point, okay.
Uh, Lisa?
Sorry.
Did Mona respond to that comment?
Yes, that we can do design review just on that zone.
We cannot do design review. We have to have objective design standards.
Right, but the objective design standards can be applicable to multifamily as can, like different setbacks for a single family as long as they're uniformly applied. So for example, you would say on lots that have densities over X amount, this is what we expect. So that's how we keep the uniformity.
But, uh, I want to make sure that we're not misrepresenting, uh, Councilwoman Hockensman William. You're talking about a design review process with a board of review or?
No, I was setting objective design criteria.
Mm-hmm.
Bob?
We didn't want to be mental. Yeah, I, um, I, I've been listening intently. The idea, there, there's mixed emotion among the group about this letter. I don't think, personally, I don't think we're ready to send a letter. On the other hand, I think we're up against a severe, a, a, a serious timeline issue on this housing element. We need to take an action. Uh, I, I would make a motion, in fact, that with the changes in density that have been discussed and more or less agreed to at, at this point, that we submit the housing element with the Bay Road and the Oakwood properties. Uh, and we table any further discussion of letters, uh, these new properties that, uh, a- a- and granted, th- those would not be part of my motion.
Fine. Second?
I'll second half. Okay, so before you vote on the motion, can I clarify that there are no added properties? One seventy, Pohemus, Valparaiso will deal with those at a later point. Marsh Road is removed. Bay Road is six units per acre. Twenty-three Oakwood is ten units per acre.
Correct, that's my motion.
Okay.
The math works out on that, so I'm better at math than me.
Same, same.
I think we've got like one.
No, it's the same. If there's a density bonus, it's the same.
Well, the math works out, but staff created that math, created the twenty-two and the four based on speculation of what properties might develop and, and what capacity. So it may change a little bit based on the final numbers.
They don't need to change it. It's speculation. I think we leave those numbers to say.
It is speculation. That is all true.
But you can't do half a development. I mean, you either have, uh, the twenty-six is Oakwood at fully developed, the ten per acre, and one of the Bay or Ringwood properties at six per acre. It's twenty-six, so.
Well, maybe, Lisa, can you explain how you got to the twenty-six?
Um, well, HCD does want to see your math. And so, um, we were really focused on the higher density of, of achieving these numbers. And HCD, you know, they're not going to assume all the properties are going to develop. So it was the Oakwood at the higher density and then possibly one other development site. So I'm just concerned about reducing the density as well as reducing the number of properties. Um, just trying to put forward, you know, the best housing, um, yeah. Um, I want to let you know, we've said before, we're really concerned about those ADU numbers as well. Um, they're, they're very high and I'm not confident that HCD is going to accept those. So I know we've got a buffer, but HCD wants to see the twenty percent buffer, um, and realistic development capacity.
How many, how many ADUs are in progress now, but not yet completed or got their certificate of occupancies?
Hmm, I don't think anybody here knows that.
Oh, wait.
I don't have the exact numbers.
I was told over the last five years, we'd built thirty-three a year on average. I didn't hear that number. Last year, last year, I thought we built sixty-three. We got permits for sixty-three.
And the year before
I was told it was thirty-three a year for the last five years. So the average was thirty-three. It could have been sixty-three in the last year, I don't know. I was just told the average.
Lisa, are you looking up something there?
She's looking up something. But I, I mean, I don't understand, Lisa, what you just said because if you take Oakwood at the at the full density, when you said twenty units an acre, that's thirty units and you said twenty-six units. So you you didn't take it.
Yeah, but we had, we had some nice plans from an interested party that kind of supported the, uh, number of units we've physically built. And so like you said, we can't assume that each site is going to be built at the maximum capacity. Um, so the last three years for, um, ADUs in two thousand and twenty, um, thirty-four, two thousand and twenty-one, there were thirty-two. And the first three months of two thousand and twenty-two, there were three. Um, and we've received nine additional.
The last two years' numbers.
It's a bit of a challenge.
Thirty-three and thirty-four, thirty-five is reasonable.
Well, it's reasonable to us.
The concern though
It's a reasonable number if you've done thirty-three, thirty-five. I mean, anybody, it may not be acceptable.
But yes.
I understand that, but it's re, it's a reasonable estimate.
Yeah, yeah.
Yeah, it's just HCD, it's unlikely to accept it and especially to accept that they're all being rented.
I, I, I really think, I think that if
Put all of this in the housing element and tell our story.
The really scale down. It's, we've got to expect it's going to come back to us, okay? It just, it will.
Come back to us no matter what, I think.
Well, okay, I just
As Lisa just mentioned, Steph's gonna do the best, as she said, to tell our story.
Yeah. And the thing about Menlo College, I think Vice Mayor made a very good point. We need to put that in the narrative and say, you know, make the case that
Just freed up affordable housing out there in the community.
Yeah. And we should get some kind of credit.
Weren't there before.
Even fifty percent.
We'll tell that story, but as you
Why doesn't it qualify because there aren't kitchens?
Kitchens and bathrooms.
Kitchens.
But aren't there some units that have a kitchen?
Three or four.
There's the two on each floor.
No, we looked at the plans, there's no individual units.
No individual units.
I thought that, well, my understanding is they were gonna have those for the RAs and the and there's a faculty unit there.
Okay.
Is there a legal to petition for that? To be, is there a vehicle within this process to petition for that?
Not within this
Motion, motion in a second, and the vote has been called. So we please do a roll call.
Certainly, so our motion is from Councilmember Polito, seconded by Councilmember Widmer. Um, take a vote, Councilmember Polito.
Aye.
Hawkins?
Aye.
Lewis?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Widmer?
Aye.
And Mayor DeGoli, yeah.
Aye.
Thank you.
Hi. And any, uh, let's see, the last item on the agenda is always council reports. Oh, oh, yeah, we do have public comment. And Anthony said somebody wanted to make comments, so we should take public comment.
Let's see, Mr.
I don't see a hand raised. If anybody would like to make a public comment, uh, we will be happy to hear your comment. Sorry, we didn't take it before, but we, since we're now meeting in person, we do have a more formal period for public comments at the beginning on each item, uh, after we've taken questions and before the council has discussed it and at the end of the meeting. And now is time for public comment at the end of the meeting.
So, Mr., I see Don's iPad, you have the floor.
Yes, Mr. Mayor and council members, this is Don Arata from twenty-three Oakwood Boulevard. Um, so I'm sorry about before when I raised my hand. I understand about the, when it's time to make comments, but there weren't any to make until after you all had some discussion. So the only point, the only point that I wanted to bring up is kind of takes tails off of where Bill started to go and say, you know, we have to worry about infrastructure and this and that and the other. And there's a, there's a whole bunch of homework to be done on multiple fronts before this thing can ever get off the ground potentially. And I just wanted to share with you that when we started with the architect, um, we, 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 we used some numbers and we went based the square footage of the units and the number of units to be able to make this project pencil out. Now, with the potential change in the density of how many units we can put, I'm not saying it's not going to pencil out, but I think it's gonna be, it's gonna be extremely hard to to have it work with those numbers at this point. So I I'm not saying it's can't happen, but it it could, it could, it could turn the whole thing upside down and make it not not feasible. And just, I just wanted to share that with you.
Okay, thank you, Don.
Okay, thank you.
Uh, any council member report?
Bill Warriors, one twelve. Uh, Carbricks eighty-seven.
Is it over?
Yeah.
Oh, great, thank you.
So I have a a report. I I was the liaison for the fire board meeting last night. And, um, a couple of things that they were doing. The one notable was, uh, the first review of their, uh, two thousand and twenty-two, twenty-three, uh, budget and full-time equivalent staffing level. And so this was a time, uh, for the, um, board members to review and ask, uh, the chief questions. The new chief is, uh, doing an excellent job trying to, um, bring the budget, uh, into some, um, uh, or organized format so that everyone can understand where it's going. One of the things that was raised was about the amount of overtime that was, uh, located in the budget of the amount of seven, eight million dollars in overtime being budgeted. And that's kind of reflected of what happened last year, right? You know, so you take what you spent last year and kind of budget forward and everything. So there was a lot of, uh, discussion about that. Um, and, uh, the fact that they want to see less overtime. And so, uh, more, more to come on that.
Does that mean they're gonna be hiring more people?
They're gonna try to work more efficiently.
Okay, that's good.
That's all I have.
I have one as well, if the council's concluded. I have one as well, if the council's concluded.
Councilmember Polito?
I know, if any other council member has a comment or doesn't have one, I have a comment.
Okay.
Uh, just that on Saturday, June fourth, we will be hosting the grand opening celebration of the town center from twelve PM to three PM, featuring the library ribbon cutting. There'll be food, music and entertainment.
Yes. And the library's got lots of fun things planned, including, um, a banner that little children are gonna burst through as the ribbon cutting. That they're not doing the formal ribbon cutting, um, themselves, so.
Have the petting zoo.
You know?
No petting zoo.
And there will be ice cream.
All right, all right. My petting zoo was always a big draw. It always is. Not to me, but you know, but to kids.
I'm just a council member report. I, in in the last week or so, I've received so many emails on this housing topic. I I probably have gotten forty-five emails on this housing topic from residents. I also got a letter from Sid Kapoor and Rafa Seinfeld. There there are a lot of people that are interested in the housing issue. Um, I, I, I think that we are fortunate to have had so many ADUs built in the last few years. And I do think that the issue that was raised tonight ought to be a future agenda item about what we could do to encourage residents to rent ADUs. Uh, I know that, I I mean, I asked the question if the property tax incentive is something we could do, and I figured it wasn't. But I don't know what we could do, i- if anything, and and what would make sense. But I think it's worthwhile to have that discussion. Um, and in the course of those emails I got, there are a large number of people whose ADUs are used by family members. Uh, and and we should make sure that when we go to HCD, th- those family members, I mean, uh, if if you're looking at rent numbers, they're very, very low. So they are very affordable housing units that would otherwise be very expensive. Uh, and that should count. I mean, there's, there's quite a large number of people using those ADUs for families.
It'd be nice to be able to quantify those.
Yeah, so how we could do that, that's a big topic for us. I I think we are rich in ADUs and that's the bulk of our filing with HCD. So I'd like to have an agenda item at some point in the future where we dig into that issue. I mean, it it really is, I I don't know that other communities are as wealthy with their ADUs as we are. Maybe because we have larger properties, but it's a good thing for us.
Yeah. Um, there was the discussion, I, and George, you put it in your, in your review letter with regards to existing but not counted uh, homes and things like that. So are we going to be able to go forward and ask people and try and take an inventory of those and possibly count some if they're being used or are we not?
I believe that's what the mayor was asking to have a conversation around how to approach that because we can just
Oh, I, two different issues. I was talking about, uh, two things. One was the rental of ADUs and what we could do to encourage residents to do that. And secondly, the, a large number of ADUs are currently being used as housing by family members at low or no rent. And we should get credit for that being very low rent because it's is very low rent. The the question I think Bill is asking is, there were, um, ADUs built before we called them or registered them as ADUs. And and I got a, I got a call yesterday from a resident exactly on this who actually had an ADU that was built in the seventies or eighties and and has rented it to Stanford faculty in the past, but isn't currently. It's never been registered because it was built before we started registering. So the, the question goes to if, if there were, if there are housing units, ADUs out there that weren't registered as ADUs, uh, but meet the criteria, can we include them now?
So we started, um, counting accessory dwelling units, guest houses, pool houses, et cetera, in our reporting as early as the year two thousand. So staff's been doing that since then. And I believe somewhere around that time, we also sent out, and some of you may remember it, a survey.
But it was, George.
Well, I I know, I'm, a survey to solicit if there were any out there and anyone's interested in grandfathering in those to report them to the town. It may not have gotten a great response. So clearly, there are some out there that may not have been counted. But if there are units out there like the one you talked about from the nineteen seventies that was never recorded by the town, never supposed to be rented, et cetera, it it may be able to be added to our current inventory, but we have to get
And would it count for HCD purposes as a new housing unit?
Assuming it hasn't or wasn't permitted as a unit, then we never recorded it or reported it in that way, so I would assume yes.
Okay, good. All right, so we should send that letter out too.
Yeah, that, but that's a whole different
Hard to quantify that.
Yeah, at least we should
We're not gonna go knocking on doors and stuff.
Now, we'll, we'll make the written
Send a letter, a letter out and ask people.
Yeah.
I mean, everybody's not gonna want to do it, but there are definitely residents who have housing units in their backyard that they've considered guest houses or pool houses that if they have, haven't been counted, but now could be counted and give us credit toward a new ADU, even if they don't have to do any
Right.
work on it, then we should
There was always
Wasn't there a state part of the ADU state laws where to to grant some of those and to get, meaning that the incentive for reporting it is that it may have been illegal before and now will be grandfathered. So that's the incentive.
Well, that was that, that was that
Are we adjourned?
Care about. Okay, we are adjourned. Yeah.
He's adjourned.
All right, Bob, we're gonna save these cookies here for you.
Yeah, I'll pick them up Monday.